Good evening, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Gomez.
Present, ma'am.
Councilman Monk.
Here.
Councilman Linius.
Here.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Councilwoman Fontleroy.
Councilman Holman.
Councilwoman Garrett Ward. Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Garrett Ward will be late this evening.
Councilman Arway.
We can call it.
Councilman James will not be here this evening. Mr. Chairman, he had a conflict with his work schedule. Mr. Chairman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Arway, could you please lead us in the salute to the flag in a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution, and to the justice of our all.
Moment of silence for all that we have lost, in particular, our great, late Councilman, Councilman Billy Hall. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. This meeting, which conforms with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws 1975, is a City Council Committee meeting. Notices have been filed with our official newspaper, with the city clerk, and posted on the regular bulletin board. Members of the public are permitted to participate. We're stipulated on the agenda. Madam Clerk, open hearing.
Open hearing of citizens pursuant to Article 4, Section 3 of the Rules of City Council. Each person wishing to address the council shall step up to the microphone, give his or her name in an audible tone for the record. Unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit remarks to three minutes. All members of the public are expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory abuse of or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Are there any members of the public wishing to address the members of council?
Excuse me. There's no book here to sign in.
Okay, Ms. Jeffries, we'll make a note of that. But you can continue. We are recording the meeting live.
I'm sorry?
You can continue. We're recording the meeting live, so, but we'll have the book there furnished in a second.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll keep time here.
Okay. Virginia Jeffries, 236 Brayden Avenue, East Orange, New Jersey. Chairperson Pullins, good afternoon, City Council members, city staff, and public in attendance, physically and virtually. Concerns are the official agenda not posted in ordinances numbers thirty, thirty-four through thirty-nine of 2025. Number one, the agenda. There was a draft agenda on February, December, on Friday, December 5th, 2025, at 4:29 PM. This is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, which requires a minimum of forty-eight hours to post "the" agenda for any public meeting. A draft agenda is not an official agenda, and subject to change in numerous ways and content, and therefore does not meet the requirement for posting a draft agenda in lieu of an agenda. Also, under law and legislation, the ordinances on second and final reading, ordinance number thirty, thirty-four through thirty-seven, these ordinances are all intertwined as they involve various properties regarding Brick Church Development Project, Brick Church Urban Renewal 4, Brick Church Urban Renewal 6, and associated pilots. These ordinances are very complex, as they cover a long history of previous amendment ordinances going back many years that have changed greatly since the initial inception. What is the need for the continuing amending of the Brick Church redevelopment project, Brick Church Urban Renewal 4, Brick Church Urban Renewal 6, as well as any future pilots for these structures and condominiums? Ordinance number thirty-eight. The original plan submitted was for forty-two units with fifty-three parking space. This is amending to have less tenant parking from fifty-three parking spaces down to forty-two. Why? How many units are one bedroom? How many units are two or more bedrooms? And ordinance number thirty-nine. What changes are generated from the state of New Jersey, and which changes are from the city council? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. We appreciate it and duly noted. If you have any further questions, Ms. Jeffries, we'll have City Administrator, Mr. Steplight, speak to you at the conclusion.
Yes, also, the agenda that's been presented tonight for the public to read for the first time includes an omnibus, omnibus resolution that was not on the draft agenda. So the public is unaware of this addition to the agenda that's been published for the first time this evening, this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Yeah, yeah. Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? Please, uh, sign the books, state your name. Madam Clerk.
Hello, my name is Farah Abdurrahman at Fort Chestnut. First is, there's a street light next to the car wash that is out. I sent an email the week before last, and I never received any response to it. My second issue is that the building, I believe, at 207 Freeway Drive East was allowed to go into disrepair, so much so that a "this building is condemned" notice was placed on the front, which forced the tenants out. I believe this was done on purpose. The current owners allowed for this building to go into disrepair, to force tenants out, so then they can then renovate and then increase the rent for new tenants. The prior tenants never let the building go in disrepair. There was always somebody on site. He kept the outside looking clean. He maintained the inside. He never let the garbage out in front when it wasn't garbage day. But these new tenants that have had this property for about five years, I believe purposely let this building go into disrepair. So I'm wondering what the council and what the mayor is going to do about these owners coming in, buying up the properties in East Orange, and trying to displace tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At the conclusion of the county, of the committee meeting, please see Mr. Steplight and Director Nagroh, who are off to my left.
Good evening, all. My name is Makemia Noel. The address is 400 Main Street in East Orange. I represent God and Star Church. I am the community engagement director there. We purchased the property September. We are so excited to be in East Orange. I just want to stop by tonight and introduce myself and my church. The bishop and first lady is Wayne and Kendra Bullock. We are here because we want to connect with the city. We have four floors. Basement has a gym. We would love to have after-school programs, basketball tournaments. We have spaces for food pantries, events, and we are a community church. So I'm here tonight to let you guys know that we're in a community. We want to connect with you. So any community leaders, I'm not sure who our council, our ward persons are. So I think it's Thurgood. We'll love to connect with you whenever you are available. We're currently going under, excuse me, we're currently going under renovations. We are at Cicely Tyson Elementary School. Now worshiping on Sundays. But by January 31st, our building should be open, and we're here to connect with you. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the address again of the church, ma'am?
400 Main Street. It's on Main and Walnut, around the corner from here.
Your representatives are Ms. Councilman Arway and Councilman Monk.
Can I see you? I'll get your information. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, East Orange, members of the council, community leaders, and neighbors. My name is Noel Hardy, and I come before you tonight with love, concern, fear, and power. I speak not just for myself, but for the many in our community whose voices are ignored, children are children are misjudged, and whose homes are at risk. On September 8th, 2025, I was baselessly evicted from my home under LT 11600-25. The trial that followed me led me down a path of discovery, truths that I wish were ghosts, but they are real, and because they are real, I feel compelled to share them. I lived at Sophie Gaslight Commons in South Orange, a building managed by Cushman and Wakefield, a subsidiary of Pinnacle. Pinnacle, Cushman, and Wakefield, as well as four others, are currently under investigation by the Department of Justice for using an algorithm called Realpages to displace tenants while maximizing landlord profit. After my eviction, the building was immediately sold to Willow Bridge, another company under DOJ scrutiny, accused along with others of collusion. What I've uncovered is not just corruption. It is a system designed to trick, to hide, and to profit from displacement. This system operates like a pyramid scheme. Decisions and policies trickle down from Pinnacle to Cushman and Wakefield to Willow Bridge, and somehow to Ros Baraka. In our community, the effects are visible if you look along South Orange Avenue. Fear, displacement, and homes turned into distress. The key factor here is what I call the ghost system. Instead of accountable employers, these companies hire private contractors, landlords, who are easily removable and replaceable. Accountability disappears. People are left vulnerable, and their homes are no longer safe spaces. This is not abstract. It is happening now. Cushman and Wakefield, Pinnacle, Willow Bridge, and Blackstone are all under DOJ investigation. Because of this and the unresolved death in case EXX-0027-20, which happened during the development of One Gateway Center in 2018 during Ros Baraka's term under Cushman and Wakefield and Pinnacle, I urge East Orange to halt all development involving these parties until state and federal oversight catches up. I have seen coercion action. At a NORC zoning meeting on December 3rd, 2025, one man and one woman stood alone advocating for their community... Hello? Oh. Facing fear yet refusing to be silent. Their collective strength reminded me that none of us can do this alone. Collective action is the only way forward. I have experienced the leadership and boldness of Latina Bird as she still serves her community boldly, beautifully, gracefully, strongly, after her horrific experience within the NORC Fire Department, swept under the rug under Ros Baraka's administration in 2018. And yet she still commits to public service. I have experienced the leadership of street soldier activist, Aith the Great, who reaffirmed his life, raises his family, takes care of local children at the hub, and commits his life story to maximizing their potential in a system that has crossed them out. In addition, on March 9th, 2025, Sergeant Joseph Ekana boldly answered the call of duty and was tragically killed by a fourteen-year-old boy. While the act was a crime, it also exposed a deeper crisis. How could a child reach such a point from an online post to a deadly encounter involving masks without intervention?
Thank you, ma'am. You reached your max with regards to your time limit. You've exceeded the three-minute time limit that we give all speakers. But we do appreciate the comments, and certainly you can speak to Director Cohen at the end in regards to everything that you've laid out with regards to those developers.
Thank you, but I would like to ask, um, question to say to the President, I'd come from a constable, business card, backhand, and the ally of the fire department. Special way to adhere to Ron's values, and maybe try to argue.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? Please step forward. State your name, and also record your name and address in the booklet, please.
Good evening, council and residents. Marjani Jones. I'm speaking tonight for a friend of mine. Um, I'd like to announce the death of her significant other. His name is Chester Holmes. He was a longtime East Orange resident as well as a community servant. He was a postal carrier for forty-five years in the same city the entire time. His route was from South Munn and Freeway Drive all the way up to 123 South Munn. So she just wanted me to announce his death to the community.
Thank you, Marjani. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Threets. I'm a resident at 209 Prospect Street, Apartment 105. There were a few things that I would like to bring to your attention. Number one, we have a garbage area in the back of the building. It currently has a vacant refrigerator, too, that are facing the front. The doors are not turned to the back. There is a freezer, and a upright freezer, that is also back there. Those are safety hazards. The next thing is, the people who I rent from would like for me to be a... I'll think of the word in a minute, but my lease states currently that I'm in a three-bedroom apartment. I am in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, dining room, kitchen, living room apartment, not three bedrooms. New tenants have come in, and they've been also told that they have three bedrooms. There are no three bedrooms. I've been in that apartment since 1990. I do not have memory issues. But it's a two-bedroom apartment, so the lease states three bedrooms. I have crossed that out and put two bedrooms and returned it to the people that I rent from. This is, you know, this is misinformation, and it's a legal document, so it's also illegal. I am also asking if it is at all possible to put the designated lines at Hamilton and Prospect because the cars zoom through there like they are on the Indianapolis 500. I really don't want to see a kid get hit. There's nothing to make these people slow down. End the buses. So we remain thoroughfare, and we need something to show. There is a house sign up where it has a, um, black configuration of an adult and a child, but that is not enough. We need something more please before there is a tragedy. Hamilton, um, has the middle school down the street. The campus is up the other end, and these kids have to get to school on foot. So can we please get something to define the crossings for the street and something for slowdown? Thank you.
Thank you. Can you repeat the... Is it 209 Prospect, ma'am?
209 Prospect Street, Apartment 105.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? Please step forward, state your name and address, and also record it in our booklet. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rodrick D. Johnson, uh, residing at 28 East Park Street, East Orange, New Jersey, 07017. This is in reference to the last council meeting where our questions are, um, raised concerns about a $25,000 grant program in regards to a redevelopment area. Once again, my name is Rodrick D. Johnson, 28 East Park Street, East Orange, New Jersey, 07017. Under U.S. Department of Education, balance $30,680.
Can you speak into the microphone, sir, so we can hear you?
U.S. Department of Education, balance $30,680.45. On November 20th, 2025, contacted Department of Education representative, handled the situation, and offered two payment methods. One being installments, one being a quick pay, under thirty days... Under thirty to forty-five days from November 20th, 2025, currently at eighteen days. Uh, I'm requesting a micro enterprise grant under East Orange for a resolution to eliminate $9,265.45 of private debt under the United States Department of Education in reference to Rodrick D. Johnson at 28 East Park Street, East Orange, New Jersey, 0710... 07017. Quick pay, $21,415 of the $25,000 micro grant used effectively to clear $9,265.45 of private debt and public funds to create $3,585 granted to Rodrick D. Johnson. Rodrick Johnson doing business, I have some charity telling, claiming, under Rodrick Johnson Football LLC Corporation, negative eighteen twenty-five dollar application fee, minus one thousand dollar conventional application fee, and $760 being used as rental assistance under 28 East Park Street, East Orange, New Jersey, 07017. Rodrick Johnson stating self-employed, secured by retail, seeking office space or consulting of short under information at $38.50 hourly rate under U.S. Department of Education job location question. Uh, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, at the conclusion of the meeting, Mr. Johnson, see this Business Administrator, Mr. Steplight, and Director Cohen. They'll give you information in regards to your request.
All right.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? This portion is getting ready to close. We have a large agenda this evening, so please step forward.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Councilwoman Garrett Ward is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Councilwoman. Good to see you. Mr. Lamar, you can step forward to the microphone.
Yes, first, as always, I'm giving honor to God and my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Please remember, God is the Spirit, and God is love, and Jesus taught us to love God and love our neighbor and to love one another. And since God is our Father, we're all brothers and sisters, and our young people are all our sons and daughters, and our young people are all God's children and our children. And please remember, narrow by the faith, hope, and love, and the greatest is love. And please remember, I still believe that there is hope for our young people in East Orange. And as always, I'm still asking, pleading, and begging you all to please remember all of our young people who passed away in East Orange, especially since 1975, because I'm ashamed to say, we have a long pattern here in East Orange when a young person passes away. Um, it gets a lot of attention at first, and then a little bit of time passes, and the attention, you know, goes right back down. And I'm sorry. And I hope and pray that God is, I'm sorry, laying on my spirit to try to raise awareness about our young people passing away ever since 1975. And I still believe we have to try to teach all of our young people to love God, to love their neighbor, to love themselves, and to love one another. And as always, I love and thank and super appreciate Sister Cynthia Brown and her staff. And as always, I sincerely apologize for all of my mistakes. And please remember, I take full responsibility for my comments, literally with my life, literally, and please put that on the record, okay? And please remember, here in East Orange, um, our people celebrate a lot of important dates. And I respect the important dates that we celebrate in East Orange. The one of the dates I have a serious problem with, and that's July 4th, because that's the anniversary of Declaration... The signing of Declaration of Independence. And please remember, the Declaration of Independence did not apply to Afro-Americans, females, African-American females, and I'm sorry to say, or the ancestors of ninety-nine percent of our people here in East Orange. And please remember, slavery was still legal in the U.S. and New Jersey until the Thirteenth Amendment was ratified on 12/6/1865. And as always, um, well, I thank Sister Samika Garrett Ward for doing a, um, resolution in December 2020 and for the 155th anniversary. And this past Saturday was the 160th anniversary. So I'm still asking, pleading, and begging you all to recognize, um, the anniversary of, 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 um, to recognize 12/6/1865, which the anniversary of signing of the Thirteenth Amendment, because that's, which legally abolishes slavery in the U.S. And as always, I'm not fighting with anybody. I'm fighting for all of our innocent African-American men, women, and children who are still in slavery, um, legally in the U.S. and New Jersey until 12/6/1865. And I also thank Sister Garrett Ward for doing another resolution for the fortieth anniversary of Mrs. King's visit here to East Orange on 11/180. And this last month was also the forty-fifth anniversary, and I hope and pray you all also recognize that important anniversary, okay? And as always, thank you all for all you all do for all of our people in East Orange, especially our young people, because they're all God's children. And may God bless you all and all of our people in East Orange, and especially our young people, because they're all God's children. And we ask these all need blessings, in Jesus' name for sake. Amen?
All right, thank you, Brother Lamar. Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? Please step forward, uh, state your name, address, and also record it in our booklet, please.
Good evening. Giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. I am Sabrina Peterson. I am from, uh, 93 Rutledge Avenue, twenty-five-year resident, I own a home on 93, uh... And I just wanted to, I didn't know if I was in the right place, you know, but, um, myself and my partner here, we have been doing line dance cardio for the city of Elizabeth, but I am an East Orange resident. So I am willing, and we are willing, to come to East Orange to present a line dance cardio for all, um, whoever's interested. Um, we love cardio. It brings us together in love and in unity. Um, it is, what we love is from our soul, so we are willing to bring that to the city of East Orange. As a resident of East Orange, I find I'm so excited when I look at through East Orange of the redevelopment, the UEZ zones, and everything that's going on in East Orange. I'm so proud to be a resident of East Orange. I really am. And I'm so proud. I mean, we all fall short to the glory of God, but I believe that because God's presence is why we are surviving, we are thriving here in East Orange. Because of the new development that I'm seeing, God has to be present. And that is inclusive. It's non-denomination. It was not just Christian, it's Muslim, it's everybody across the board. So I want to include everybody in our new agenda, or whatever it is we can do for you to bring cardio to the community. We are willing, and we do have, you know, we can connect with whoever you put us with, and we are willing to. Thank you, Naima Fontleroy. I do see you smiling. I do see Holman. Holman, who was my daughter's... Uh, my daughter played the harp for, sorry, the harp for, um, Sheila Oliver. Yes, she did, during COVID. So I want you to know, we are here for you guys, and line dance cardio to bring a smile to everyone's heart and their soul. Thank you for this opportunity. Samika Garrett, I love you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else willing to address the members of council? Please step forward, state your name and address, also record it in the booklet, please.
Yes, hello, council and, um, community. Uh, my name is Christina Ingers. I reside at 507 South Clinton Street. Um, this is my first time literally coming to any council, being anywhere, and even involving myself in any way as far as publicly. Again, I've resided at 507 South Clinton. I've been living there for over about thirteen years. And, um, what I've learned about myself is that, based on what the community needs, I've been providing it for some time now, and I didn't really know the power of what I do and how, um, you guys can help me with furthering what I do. Um, I affect communities, I've helped homeless people, uh, given out clothes, uh, counsel. I've done a lot. I just want to come here today to first introduce myself to you guys and let you know that, um, although I'm new, I have been doing a lot, as I said. And some of it's just go so unfound to where some people have told me that I should come and show up here. So I'm just showing up here today to hopefully get some guidance, some, um, learn the lingo of what's being done here. I appreciate everyone that spoke before me, which gave me courage to even stand up here today. But I just want to possibly get help with helping the community more. I know a lot of people trying to resource me out to, um, Joy's Angels and all of these other nonprofits, which I'm not aware of, because I, again, I've been doing a lot from my own pockets. I've been doing a lot from my own home. And being as though my boys won't go into the Navy as of February, I'm hoping that within the next year, I can provide my home as a community service space so I can move out, because it's too big for me. Um, after raising five boys and all my family, I'm the youngest matriarch that I know, being forty-five, um, losing my elders. And it really had me step up, not only in my family for the past forty-five years, but also in my community since I can remember. And I'm just learning my power, learning my strengths, and I want to exercise it in the city of East Orange. I love my mayor. He's been very approachable, walking through the streets with some of the council members. Um, I haven't had any problem. Only thing I would say on my block, I would say, during a block association meeting, I just started a block association, uh, within the past three weeks. Um, this would be my fourth month doing it, rather. So I've done four, about to do four. And, um, I just look for advice. I look for guidance, and the complaints I have on my block is the traffic. Like someone mentioned, um, is a lot of riding fast through my block. Um, one, just not too long ago, a woman and a child got hit. Um, I hope to request some speed bumps or some type of different lining, because the lining is worn out. You can't really see it. But I just say that all to say thank you for listening to me, and I hope to see y'all soon again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the members of council? Seeing none, this portion of the meeting is closed. Madam Clerk.
Arts, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, Councilman Monk.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, city council members, and residents at home. I'd like to request a memorial for First Lady Paulette P. Faulkner.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any abstentions or nays? Thank you. And now we have a, Chairman, we have a presentation, of which Councilwoman Fontleroy and Councilman Linius will present.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Naima Fontelroy. I'm a councilwoman here with Councilman Berg Linius. And thank you, Councilman Monk, um, for this resolution. I'm presenting this resolution on behalf of my colleagues here on council, our chairman, um, Vernon Pullins, and Vice Chairwoman Amy Lewis, um, whereas the city of East Orange recognizes Gregory Thompson, Jr. This, Mr. Thompson, would you join us here? How are you this evening, sir? Whereas the city of East Orange recognizes Gregory Thompson, Jr. for his outstanding dedication to the art of barbering, his entrepreneurial spirit, and his unwavering commitment to uplifting the community through mentorship, service, and personal empowerment. And whereas Gregory Thompson, Jr. was born in Orange, New Jersey, I see you, Councilwoman Summers-Johnson, and raised in East Orange and South Orange, and discovered his passion for barbering at an early age, inspired by his mother and cousin, recognizing that a fresh haircut could not only change one's appearance, but uplift one's spirit and self-confidence. And whereas in nineteen eighty-five, Gregory Thompson, Jr. embarked on a journey to turn his passion into purpose, find, founding GTI Square's Barber Shop, with GTI standing for gentlemen taking in- interest, a name that reflects his belief that style begins with self-respect and personal care.
I'm sorry, South Orange, uh, he belongs to us. Sorry, he belongs to East Orange. For more than twenty-five years, Gregory Thompson, Jr. and GTI Barber Square Shop, Barber Shop, has stood as a pillar of the community, not only offering exceptional grooming services, but serving as a safe haven, mentorship hub, and community gathering space. Under Gregory Thompson, we call him G, so I'm gonna say G, under G's leadership, GTI Square has mentored aspiring barbers, offered guidance and support to youth, and positively impacted the lives of countless clients through care, compassion, professionalism, and earning respect and admiration of residents and peers alike. Now therefore be it resolved, that Mayor Ted R. Green and the East Orange City Council commend Gregory Thompson, Jr. for his outstanding contributions through GTI Square's Barber Shop, and express sincere appreciation for his continued service, leadership, and positive influence within our community. Congratulations, G, of GTI Square. Before, oh, come on in. Before, uh, you know, he says a few words, I just want to say that, uh, first off, congratulations on twenty-five years. I know it took a long time to get here, but right there on Central Avenue, um, you know, for those who don't know, he's right next to the KFC and the, uh, G, uh, Mrs. G's. But he's been a pillar in this community for so long. There has never, there has never been a moment where I did not call this man, and he did not come out and support the community. He started one of the first free read, um, initiatives in the city, in his barber shop, where kids could come while they're waiting for haircuts and start reading with their parents. He also started, my, the first time I ever started clothing drive, Chairman Pullins and I, we started clothing drives, and we put ba- our boxes and, uh, you know, respective businesses all across the city. He was the first person who allowed us to do that in his shop. He was the first person, yes, please give him a round of applause. With Reverend Lunick Boyd, when we were doing our bookbag giveaways, and we were doing the free haircuts for the community, he was the first person to come out and do that. Thank you, Reverend Lunick Boyd. And so, G, you are more than a business owner, you are a pillar in the community, you are a brother, you are a mentor, you are a father to so many children, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city of East Orange. And that boy clean, look at him, look at him. All right, all right, all right, all right, all right, all right, all right. Yeah, let me, let me get my life, let me get my life. All right, check it out. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to give honor to God, my family, my friends, my relationships, Councilman Berg, Mayor Ted, and the entire East Orange community for acknowledging my twenty-five year service on Central Avenue. I also wanted to say this clearly, it has never been about me. It's always been about everyone around me, the people who shaped me, supported me, challenged me, and trusted me. I've been doing this for forty years, and one of the things I've learned is this, results come from your works. There is no cheat code. I had mad, I had, I made mistakes, bad turns, bad choices, but I learned that all, all of it is part of the process becoming successful and becoming great. A major part of my inspiration has been my children, Gregory Thompson III, my twins, Anya and Yanni. I've always taught them, whatever you choose to do in life, let your work ethic be consistent, love what you do, because results come from effort. Proverbs sixteen, three and four says, "Commit to the Lord whatever you do, and he will establish your plans." The Lord works out everything to its proper end. And in the barber world, we live by this truth, a good haircut ain't cheap, and a cheap haircut ain't good. So my journey was, my, my, my journey begins in Orange. I was born in Orange, Orange Memorial, lived in East Orange, raised in South Orange. I went to Columbia in nineteen eighty-five, I was twelve years old. It was back-to-school sh- shopping time, and I wanted those, those Nike Force, long young, lo- long before young people today even know they're called Air Force Ones, but I didn't get them. My pops bought me those Jeepers. They was called Zips. Instead, I was angry, and I asked my pops, "Why?" He said something I'll never forget, "Son, I'm not here to give you what you want, I'm here to give you what you need." I didn't understand it then, but I understand it now, no long after. I watched my mother cut my Uncle Joe's hair in the, on, on the porch of South Orange when she dusted him off, and he reached into his pocket to pay her, something clicked in me. I asked her, "Mom, you can get paid for that?" She said, "Absolutely. It's an act of service." That was a turning point. I grabbed my brothers, Jason and Carl, took them to the basement, and started honing my craft. It bec- it became the basement barber shop. They told the neighborhood, the neighborhood told each other, and my journey began. By high school, I was cutting everybody, family, friends, pretty much Essex County. My pops noticed I had a beeper. He wasn't feeling that at all, he was, ooh, he was mad. He said, "Son, only people who have beepers is doctors and drug dealers." But one day, he came home, worked, and saw a line of cars outside the house in South Orange, and he asked my mom, "What's going on?" She told him, "Go in the basement." He went down there and saw the basement packed. That's when he realized how serious I was, and my sarcasm was, barbers got beepers too. I had a full operation running out of the basement in nineteen ninety-four. I went to Concord and Bloomfield College of Dentology, graduated in ninety-five. When finishing my last six hundred dollars, there was a lady, went, there was a lady by the name of Cassandra that had a shop named Jassio's at four-thirty-three Central Avenue in East Orange, and she asked for a barber, and I said, "Absolutely." I worked with three heavy hitters, Third Row, Doc, and Twelve, who helped me elevate my skills and pushed me further. I stayed, I stayed there until nineteen ninety-nine. Jassio's was about to shut down, and something else was already lining up for me. Across the street, there was a used flower shop owned by Miss Addison, who lived in South Orange, and ad- and I asked her, "If you ever decide to sell, please let me be the first to know." No longer after, she did, and me and my pops bought the building. That's how GTI Square was born in two thousand and one. For twenty-five years, GTI Square wasn't just a barber shop, it was a community, a hub, a family, a legacy. And I stand here today only because of the people who poured into me, my parents, my children, my brothers, my sisters, every father, uncle, mother, auntie, cousin, mentor, and client, whoever sat in my chair, you all played a role in my life, and I would not be who I am today without you. From the block on Hamilton Road in South Orange, in the basement, where I began to GTI Square in East Orange, you all shaped my journey, my career, and my purpose of servicing others. Thank you for twenty-five years of support, love, and community, and I salute. God bless you all. Thank you.
Council, Councilwoman, 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 Councilwoman. We are, we'll do one with him, just as council. Go ahead and get it.
So, real, real, very quickly, just wanted to take a moment, G already did this, but I think it's important to, you know, reiterate this, G already gave a shout-out to his parents, to Mama and Papa Thompson, right? And for anyone that knows the Thompsons, they know how they, and G spoke about this already, about how they opened their community up, but you see what the work and what they poured into, and how residual effects and the impact, he just took the mantle and did it all. So, I'll just give it, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. and Mrs. Thompson for their work, they're seeing the results. And it's not just G, it's not just the immediate family, they pour into so many youth, in particular to you, Papa G, um, right, and Mama G, that's all the youth that they poured into. There's so many of us who have spent holidays, who've spent dinners at the Thompson family house, um, and was able to get those jewels from them, and we're going out making a difference now. And so, just like we talked to G, like, he, he's my big bro, he's our big bro, and we're seeing the impact of that. So we also want to give, pay homage to the Thompson family, Mr. and Mrs. Thompson, for all the work you've done, and particularly in this community here in East Orange as well.
Okay. Congratulations again, G. Uh, we want to definitely welcome, uh, Jamie Summers-Johnson, the Honorable, from, uh, Orange Township, our Councilwoman. And we also have, joining us this evening outside of our fantastic residence, we have, um, Professor Anthony Iacona with his students from Keene University. Please welcome them. Without further ado, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Madam Clerk, that concludes Arts Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you. Business, business development and zoning in the absence of Councilman James, Councilman Linius.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, those in the view in public and those online. Uh, we have a resolution of the city of East Orange and the county of Essex, authorizing the execution of amendments to one or more trusts and dentures and related agreements in connection with the Brick Church redevelopment project, and determining other matters in connection therewith. All those in favor?
I'll give you a second, a little second.
Councilman Lewis. Vice Chair Lewis.
Thank you.
Any abstentions, any nays? Oh, Madam Clerk, can you please put on regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I have an omnibus resolution of the city of East Orange and the county of Essex, authorizing the execution of amendments to certain agreements in connection with the Brick Church redevelopment project, and determining other matters in connection therewith. Have a second?
Second, I'll give it to you.
All those in favor? All right. Regular agenda, Councilwoman, or are you good? Oh, regular agenda as well, Madam Clerk. That, that concludes business development zoning, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Finance, Councilman Linius.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I have payroll number twenty-four, in the amount of three million. Uh, thank you so much, Council, uh, Councilman Monk. All those in favor? Any abstentions, any nays? I've billed claims and appropriations dated twelve-eight-twenty-five. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you so much. I have authorized payment of accumulated absence liabilities to former employees in the amount of $33,305.38. All those in favor? Any abstentions, any nays? I have a resolution authorizing the renovation of the Security Room, second floor, City Hall, through the Hunterdon County Educational Service Commission Co-op Purchasing Program. Second. All those in favor? Any abstentions, any nays? I have a resolution authorizing the renovation of the Conference Room, third floor, City Hall, through the Hunterdon County Education Service Commission Co-op Purchasing Program. All those in favor, excuse me, have a second? Thank you, Councilman Gomez, all those in favor? Any abstentions, any nays? Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, that concludes Finance.
Thank you, Health and Education, Councilwoman Fontenroy.
She's not in her chair, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry?
She's not in her chair. You want to go to the second?
I'll move on, Housing, Licensing, and Inspection, Councilman Arway.
I'm on the committee, I could probably. I'm on that committee if you want.
You want to go ahead, okay. Health and Education, Councilman Gomez, in the absence of Councilwoman Fontenroy.
Yes, there's no resolutions.
Thank you. Housing, Licensing, and Inspection, Councilman Arway. Thank you, Planning and Grants, Councilwoman Garrett Ward.
Nothing this evening, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Public Safety, Councilwoman Lewis. Thank you, Public Works, Councilman Gomez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, no legislation this evening.
Law and Legislation, Councilwoman Holman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have ordinance for second and final reading, ordinance number 30 of 2025, and ordinance authorizing the execution of financial agreement for paying to certain taxes to each of Brick Church Urban Renewal, 4 LLC, and Brick Church Urban Renewal, 6 LLC, pursuant to long-term tax exemption law.
Second, ma'am.
In recovery area bond, on 18th and 1st, to see prior ordinances of the city in part of authorized certain actions.
A second, ma'am.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also have an ordinance for second and final reading, ordinance number 34 of 2025, ordinance providing for supplemental guarantee special assessment of the cost of certain improvements on and in the area of 683 Lot 1, in the City of East Orange County, New Jersey.
Second, ma'am.
And authorizing the execution of supplemental guarantee special assessment agreement. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also have a second and final reading, ordinance number 35 of 2025, and ordinance of the City of East Orange County, New Jersey, authorizing the decision of custody by the city for the funding of deficiencies in a debt service reserve fund established for one or more series of not to exceed 1.65 redevelopment area bonds, Brick Church Station redevelopment project, being used to finance a portion in the, of the infrastructure costs for Phase 1A of the crossings at Brick Church Station redevelopment. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Also have for second and final reading, ordinance number 36 of 2025, ordinance amending ordinance number 50 of 2021, adopted on October 21st, 2021, entitled an ordinance of City of East Orange, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of payment of the principal of the interest of not exceeding $12,150,000 aggregated principal amount of city guaranteed redevelopment area bonds,
Second, ma'am.
Brick Church redevelopment project issued by the City of East Orange to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank in the state of New Jersey. Any, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I also have on second and final reading, ordinance number 37 of 2025, ordinance providing for the supplemental special assessment of the cost of certain stormwater and sanitary sewer improvements and environmental remediation in the area of 533 Dr. MLK Junior Boulevard, also identified as Block 683 Lot 1,
Second, ma'am.
in East Orange, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, in amount of $1,650,000, authorizing the execution of a special assessment agreement. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also have an ordinance. I lost my place, ordinance number 38 of 2025 for second and final reading, and ordinance of the City of East Orange, County of Essex, New Jersey, granting a tax exemption and payments in lieu of taxes with respect to certain, and authorizing the execution of a financial agree, I'm sorry, in respect to certain property identified as Block 673 Lot 1, 31 Washington Street,
Second, ma'am.
and Lot 2, 33 Washington Street, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with VITA 31 Washington Urban Renewal. Any questions?
Yes. Uh-huh. Um, Councilwoman, I thought that we actually had put this to the side because, um, well, you know what?
Uh, any other questions?
No.
Did I get my vote?
You got, you got your second, you didn't get your vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also have for second and final reading, ordinance number 39 of 2025, and ordinance to, for second and final reading, ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 247, Article 1 of the City Code entitled "Five-Year Tax Exemption and Abatements." Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's all I have, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the items on the committee agenda for the season.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Call of the wards, Vice Chair Lewis.
I can't think of anything.
It's okay.
Well, I want to, you know, I want to say that, um, my neighbor passed away and personally escapes me, but she is a dear relative.
Pearly Shaw.
I would choose.
Pearly Shaw.
Pearl.
Pearly Shaw.
Pearly Shaw. And so I want to send my condolences out publicly to her family. And she was a beautiful woman, I enjoyed being her neighbor. And my prayers and condolences go out to her family today.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Councilman Arway.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, East Orange family. I want to take this opportunity, I want to thank the residents, particularly the residents of the Second Ward and all the residents that came out with us for a night out Friday night. We were blessed enough to take East Orange residents to the city for a night out in the city to see 44, the Obama musical, which was surely a great time. You know, all that was in attendance, you know, had kind of a night of their life. You know, I want to thank the theater, the Darrowoff Theater, for their hospitality. Had the opportunity to take pictures with the cast, had the opportunity to talk with the cast, and so on and so forth, it was great fun. But just another notch in the Second Ward's belt of outings that we've been able to have for our residents. And so I want to, you know, just show appreciation to the residents for coming out and to stay tuned for the next event. Chairman, I also think is worthy to address some of the events of last week, in particular the news story that came out about 75 Prospect. So, you know, I help, I ask for everyone to indulge me, just speaking on, just as a neighbor of the Second Ward, and speaking as chairman of Housing, Licensing, and Legislation. When we saw the article, when I saw the article, I was highly, highly disappointed. But with research, and obviously we're all aware of the, of what that building and those other buildings in the area has been going through. Unfortunately, there was a lot of mistruths that were said in that article. One of the best ways that we can arm our residents is with information, and the right information. And to that point, myself, Councilman Monk, and all of our city council colleagues have availed ourselves to be just that, the source of information. Obviously, in terms of our role, in terms of what we do in the city as leaders, we're not the administration, we don't act, you know, we don't play out and enact any of the policies, but we legislate the policies and we become very familiar with our policies. And to that point, I'm very proud of the ordinances and the laws that we have in East Orange to regulate our housing, not to mention the state ordinances that's on the books. Those laws are very clear in terms of what are the rights of the residents. And one of the first things we've done, once we instilled, was make sure those residents are aware of those rights. For, in particular in that building, for example, one of the first things I did was make sure that every resident in that building has access to the truth and rent in hand, which is the state guidelines of how, you know, renting laws and renting ordinances within the state. We have things in measure before any property owner can raise their rent. Property owners cannot arbitrarily raise their rent just because they feel like it, in particular with our buildings. Rent rolls need to be accurate, they need to come before us in the rent leveling board and apply for that rental increase. So unfortunately, some of what was reported on that article is just, quite frankly, are not true. And I just wanted to make sure that we reiterate to all the residents who are here and who's watching at home, and to pass that word, that we are here for your support. We are here to make sure, you know, defend our residents from any malicious acts, any bad actors. And be quite frank with you, the bad actors that we have in our town are very far and few. We have a multitude of more great actors, and obviously, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? And so that's what we're experiencing now. But we're proud of what we've been able to do in Housing and Licensing in this committee, this year and last year, in terms of the laws we have enacted and the amendments we have made. We're going to continue to strengthen that law. I want to make sure we avail ourselves for any resident that's having any issues, right? Obviously, we have the city council meetings that you come and talk to us, but our city council staff and all of my colleagues here avail themselves regularly for any recourse that you may be looking for, or relief you may be looking for for any malicious acts that might be taking place from property owners, managers, so on and so forth. And so with that being said, we will continue to look into the issue, we will continue to be on point, but I ask everyone to just make sure their information is accurate and that is factual, all right? With that being said, I yield.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Monk.
Thank you, Chairman. This past Saturday, former East Orange resident Juan Guera, who migrated from Colombia over 50 years ago, came to the United States, became a draftsman amidst all the challenges that it takes to go to school and become a drafting, draftsman, paid for that type of career many, many moons ago in the early 70s, passed away. He leaves his wife, who also worked in the industry, his son, who later became a graphic designer, and his son, Gaspard Guera, who served in the United States Navy for 20-plus years proudly, and was the number-one person in the Navy that the United States would send to other countries for different reasons. We wish the family very well. He was with us for 86 years, formerly of South Harrison Street, many, many moons ago, before he moved out of the city to buy a house in Newark, New Jersey. Send my condolences to them. We are now in the polar vortex season, and I would just ask our residents to not frown upon people that are asking for money or judge. As reported on a lot of the national news channels, there are more homeless people now than ever. New Jersey is not without their homeless population, and the temperatures are pretty low, and they will get lower this week and into next week. So whatever you can do, if you can stand there with them for 30 minutes, to call 211, so that these people may get placed somewhere, if there's someplace available, please do that. Just from your phone, stand right there with them, let them know you're going to help them out, dial 211. Let them go through the questionnaire on your phone. There are some homeless people who do not have cell phones, so they cannot do this. 211 will send links to your phone that only you'll be able to open up, and somehow, some way, you'll have to give that information to them so that they can be on their way. And sometimes, you may even find yourself in a situation where you might just want to give them a ride to that location. It's the holiday spirit. How could we celebrate anything if we do not help the people who are right around us all the time? Giving sometimes is wonderful. Putting money in the Salvation Army bucket is great, but sometimes we have to step up and go a little bit further. Here in the city of East Orange, Laquina Rollins, in our homeless division, has identified people within the city that are homeless and persist to remain on the street for various reasons. But it will be more than Laquina and the people in the Health Department that get that job done. So I ask everyone to do a different level of outreach. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Linius.
Thank you so much, Chairman Pollens. I just want to address the students from Keene University. I want to first say thank you for coming out, I know it takes a lot of courage to come to these meetings. You heard earlier where one of the residents said it was the first time here. And, you know, life happens, things happen, and so when, to come out, you know, in the middle of your evening, when you could be doing so many other things, it takes a lot of courage. And I want to say thank you to you, University of Keene students, for your advocacy and the fact that you're here. You know, it does not go unnoticed, you know, the sacrifice that it took to be here. And I just want to say, whatever I can do to help support you along your journey, you know, please reach out to myself, my name is Berg Senlenius, but everyone calls me Berg, represent the Third Ward, and, you know, dear friends with President Repellet, so, you know, please tell him we said hello, and continue on your journey, you know, because at the end of the day, we as a council, we as a city, we fight always for the greater good and not for the small few. And so I want you to keep that in mind in whatever it is that you're doing. You know, to continue to push, continue to fight, continue to advocate, and continue to have your voices be heard for the greater good of this society. So thank you, and may God bless you, and happy holidays to you all.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say to all of the residents who extended themselves to our community, this is the season of giving, and for those who were willing to volunteer and give to our community, this is a beautiful thing. On Bootsy, we will be talking, because line dancing, you know, I do need to learn the new line dances because I don't know all of them, and I'm quite sure there's some folks out here in the audience who would love to learn some of them as well, so we'll be talking about, you know, the facilities that we can use coming in January. And let's start moving, let's put our feet to the ground and start shaking off some of the eggnog and apple pie and pumpkin pie and holiday cookies and everything that we're putting on right now. And, you know, congratulations to the young man Gee, who cut hair. You know, I was chuckling when he said, you know, he took his brothers in the basement and started cutting on them, you know. What better way? So there might be some other young men who, you know, will get some clippers for Christmas and, you know, start their own dream of entrepreneurship and, you know, building a new legacy here in the community, because it's all about, you know, starting somewhere, start from the ground up. He started from the basement and look what happened. And, you know, Quans is coming up, so that's a beautiful thing, and that's all I have. Happy holidays to everyone.
Yes, welcome to the students, and happy holidays, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. To my buddy, yes, that's a great idea, if you're doing it in Elizabeth, might as well come on home with it. So we need to sit and talk, talk with our recreational director and see about where we can carve out some time and a location for you. That's an excellent idea. There's a few that I don't know, but most of them I do know, but I look forward to working out with you guys. To Gee, you know, congratulations to him. From what I gather, honor well deserved for what you do in the community. And listening to his story, Councilwoman Garrett Ward and I were like, we were really inspired on how he started that and came up into the community and followed his dream. And here he is, what was it, 20, 25 years later? So that's inspiration to our youth. This, you too can do this as well. And that's all I have, I'll say my well wishes for the next council meeting.
And that's all I have, I'll say my well wishes for the next council meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. To the students from Keene University, welcome. I used to be a government legal studies major, I was a government and legal studies major at Bowdoin College, and I just went back last week to sell this, I'm going to segue, but before I do, really, going to school to study policy and legislation is so amiable, because it can take you into so many different places. And if ever you need to speak with any of us, we make ourselves available to our community and you're part of our extended community at that. Give our good, well wishes to President Repalet. He definitely supports our community in so many different ways, so it's great to see you here tonight. And I'm going to segue back to Bowdoin. I spent last weekend in Maine, again, back to my second home in Maine, and I want to give big shout-outs to Stacy Jones Lee. Dr. Stacy Jones Lee was my roommate and is my bestie. She was inducted into the Athletic Hall of Honor at Bowdoin College. So, shout-outs to Bowdoin College and all those Bowdoin alums out there who are watching and making history out there. To my good girlfriend Tiffany Thompson, who I saw in the back celebrating her brother Gee and her family, I wanted to shout Tiffany out. And continued condolences to Mrs. Holt on the passing of Councilman Holt. Our hearts are still jarred, but also, we are celebrating the legacy that he left in each and every one of us. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fawn Leroy, and as my colleagues echoed, Professor, we want to again welcome Keene University. And I would, on behalf of, you know, Councilman Chris James, who shared the information with us, you know, we welcome you. I would strongly suggest, Professor, that if it permits, if time permits this semester, you might want to send a member of council or two an invitation to come and talk to your class, where it's, you know, maybe a little bit more intimate, and they can ask some more probing questions, both on the legislative side and the political side. So, welcome to the great city of East Orange under the leadership of Ted R. Green, our mayor, and these fine ten members of council. We welcome you. We welcome our residents as well. We've, we have one more meeting, which remains here in the great city of East Orange for the calendar year twenty twenty-five, which will be next Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five-thirty PM here in this Argus Chambers. I am now going to close the committee meeting and ask Madam Clerk how much time you need before we start the regular. Okay, so.
Can I just, I'm sorry, Chairman. I wanted to also say to Ms. Sabrina Peterson, I am very interested in learning how to bring in the cats, and I'm working on it every night, so we got to get to that soul line dancing as soon as possible. Councilwoman, maybe we could do something in our field house with them after the holidays. Also, to the young lady who's wearing a Cheney University sweatshirt and is interested in continuing her work in the community, Cheney's roots are deep in East Orange, and their roots are deep in community service, so I'd love to talk to you more about that, but you have a brethren of community servants and nonprofits in East Orange that you can collaborate with before you take flight and wings on your own as a nonprofit. Thank you, Chairman, I yield.
No problem, Councilwoman, and definitely appreciate those comments to our Third Ward resident on the rise. I'd also like to welcome, who is a member of the Keene Envoy, the Honorable J. C. M. Edwards, Vice President of the Trenton City Council. Welcome, Councilwoman. So, without that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? The committee meeting is adjourned, we need about five minutes before we go into regular.